We're going to start. We have just had an executive session and so we're already in session. But we're going to start with administrative business, which is agenda item number two. The calendar is here. We have a variety of subcommittee meetings before the end of the year. The only one that's changed is finance. Everything else, I think, is straightforward. We do have a public hearing tonight with the Board of Selectmen on the ninth elementary school. And then we'll have a joint meeting to deliberate further on December 15th, which is a Tuesday. Just so everybody's clear, that's a Tuesday. We will also still be meeting that Thursday. Any additions to the calendar? It's squinting eyes. Okay, good. So we have a consent agenda. We have some past records and the establishment of the Peter McNulty Memorial Scholarship. Do I have a motion? Ms. Stram, seconded by Ms. Stone. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Subcommittee reports. Finance, Ms. Stram. And you do have an agenda item a little bit later, so.
The finance subcommittee met earlier this week to discuss the first quarter report, which we will talk about later in our agenda. We also recommended that two financial policies be reviewed by the policy subcommittee. They were the financial assistance policy and the student fees and fines policy. So we'll be discussing those later down the line in that subcommittee before they come to the full committee. The final update is that we will review a first draft of the budget in our meeting on December 18th, which, as Susan just mentioned, was moved. So please make note of the new date and time. And a few things to just highlight that will be different in terms of how we look at the report, that the budget will be reformatted to match the format of how the town's financials are prepared, so that you can more easily connect the two. We will also be preparing the budget to look at the numbers in one view instead of multiple views. I know that we've, in the past, sliced and diced the budget in many different ways and that made it a little harder for people to connect the dots and understand how everything adds up. And so we're looking to streamline and simplify. And finally, there'll be a new addition to the budget, which will show how personnel or the budget is broken down by different bargaining units. So those are sort of new changes that you all should expect to see when we review the draft at the end of this month.
Great, thank you. Any questions? Capital improvements?
As we saw on the calendar, the capital subcommittee will be meeting a week from tomorrow at 8:00 a.m. So there isn't a report from the committee. Obviously, lots still going on in town hall and in town around the ninth school study and we're going to take that up with the Board of Selectmen shortly later this evening. But there is some news, which is that the lease for the devotion school K-4 building, Lower Devo on Webster Street, we might call it. I don't know if anybody's calling it that yet. The lease was signed and I think I would ask the superintendent to give us a little bit of a report on that.
The signing of the lease was a long process and, as David said, we're very pleased it was executed last week. And what it does for us, it gives us some safeguards moving forward as we try to build out that property to be a temporary school for the next two years during the construction phase of the devotion school. Some of the important aspects of that lease are that all the construction documents will be completed by December 23rd. So not only the building committee, but also the town's engineers and the town's inspectors will have all the construction documents within a few weeks. And also, the owner's contractor has agreed to build out a mock classroom. So he's actually going to take some space in that building that wouldn't be ready for us to look at until the spring. But he's going to take one or two of the spaces and actually build a mock classroom so we can go in this month before the vacation period and actually view what the classroom will, what a classroom will look like. So the devotion teachers and administrators will have a chance to go over, look at this classroom, make recommendations of where they want their teaching wall, where they want their IT drops. And that'll be very helpful to make sure that when the project is completed in the spring, it meets our needs and it's what we want. The actual construction phase will take place from February to May. We will take occupancy on May 16th, which will really give us June, July, and August to do the finishing details to create that school atmosphere for the devotion K-4 population. So that's all good news. The other thing I might mention, David, is the capital committee has been really analyzing these projections we talked about a few weeks ago in great detail. And we're still working on it, but we feel that by analyzing it, we'll be able to identify well in advance where the classroom shortages will be due to enrollment increasing over the next five years until a ninth school is online. And we'll be able to give the building department a great deal of time to anticipate where the needs are. And so we hope to have this analyzed within a few weeks. And we're already started doing some onsite tours for what we have already projected as our needs for next year in some of the schools with the classroom shortfall due to enrollment increase. That's about it.
Any questions? Okay, the only thing other that I'll note is I saw an email in my inbox today that we have a fully executed project funding agreement for the devotion project. So that's very exciting. We're getting instructions on how to enter project budgets into the MSBA system, which is always a good sign. Ms. Chalupski?
So in addition to that, we, the devotion project is out for estimates to our cost estimators right now for, and it's due tomorrow. There'll be some reconciliation between the two groups that are doing the cost estimates and we will be meeting on December 14th in the morning to find out the results of that and whether or not we're going to have to do some value engineering or not. So keep tuned.
Okay. Curriculum, Ms. Chalupski.
So also, there's a meeting on the 16th. The agenda is a little bit to be decided, but depending on when we get the, if we get the accountability numbers from the state or not, if we do, that may bump some of it. But right now, what we have planned is the technology update, the senior class paper discussion with Deb Holman and Mary Bershennell from the high school, and a sort of preview of the high school, a school improvement plan. So that's what we'll be discussing.
Okay, great. Government relations, we have a first reading. Ms. Stone.
Chair, in front of you are, is a, for first reading, a draft of our legislative priorities document that, when we have approved it, which I hope we will at our next meeting in December, will be the document that we share ahead of our legislative breakfast with our team of legislative representatives from the State House and Senate. Those of you who were with us last year will recognize the issues that were raised, the specific legislative issues that were raised. The introduction was changed, obviously, to reflect where we are in our enrollment growth, but also to reflect the override and the challenges that continue to face us in terms of responding to growth. The legislative priorities are really not about our key issue on growth. And so what this is essentially saying is, is saying that while we are focused very clearly for now on continuing our, the school system in the context of all of these changes, that doesn't diminish our interest in the legislation. It may diminish our ability to do a lot of work on it, but we still want to hear from, we still want to hear from our legislators about where these pieces of legislation fit in their priorities, in what they think is going to happen in the second session of the legislature that starts in January, particularly around the issues that we have been working with them on for some years now. The transportation, adding transportation costs to the circuit breaker calculation, the trigger for what allows local districts to get reimbursement from the circuit breaker for, for high-cost special education. We, we thought it was important to thank our legislators, who were very, very involved last year in sustaining and getting a slight increase actually for us on the Metco program, especially in light of the conversation that this town had around Metco during the override and leading up to the override. So we want to talk to them about that, certainly thank them and talk to them about, just reflect on what happens, which is what happened in Brookline was exactly what we kept on predicting would happen as Metco gets chiseled, the Metco funding gets chiseled away. And so, so that is still on our legislative priorities list. The third one is, again, continuing the conversation about mandate relief. Every year, we talk about the growing pressure on our budget, our administrators, our educators from both federal and in particular state mandates to implement new curriculum programs or services. Each year that we have this conversation, our legislators are very, very sympathetic and each year the legislature passes new curricular mandates. And while we, every single time we talk to our legislative delegation about this, we explain that we don't object in principle to many of these mandates. We think some of the curricular changes have been excellent. We have, we have been happy to move forward. The most recent one this year was a, was a new law mandating sex education curriculum. Brookline happily is in a position of already being in compliance with, with that, but it's, it's the fact that it's being legislated rather than, rather than developed and again, and being legislated without commensurate support for the implementation of those curricula. Fourth, the, the issue that we've talked about again for many years, that our delegates have, have actually introduced legislation on our behalf on health insurance coverage, coverage for medically necessary treatment in school. We will undoubtedly have a very similar conversation about that as we have in the past, but it's good to, for us to keep on talking about it and reaffirming our support for legislation that, that, that we have, again, interest in looking at long-term revising the foundation budget to reflect real costs. That's something that there was a, a committee that reported on this year to the legislators. It'd be interesting to see what our delegates think, our representatives believe will happen with those recommendations. The tuition increases at out-of-district private schools for special needs continues to be a source of budget pressure and continuing the funding for what we now refer to as true universal pre-K. Thank you, Ms. Chalupski. And the support for full-day kindergarten implementation in the district. We added this year, because, because it is such a big and public issue and because we know they will be considering H-340, the proposed moratorium on high-stakes use of standardized tests, we included, not as a priority because the school committee was divided in its vote over that, but, but we wanted to acknowledge that we took a vote on it in terms of the warrant article, that we were divided. And attached to these priorities, our unanimously endorsed statement on standardized testing so that we can have that conversation with our legislators as well. I think it's important to recognize that Frank Smizik is one of the sponsors of H-340 and so I also believe it will be good to have that conversation directly with him about where we were, what the concerns were, and also get a sense of, of what may happen with that, especially in light of the U.S. House of Representatives' action on no child, finally putting a lid on No Child Left Behind and moving us forward and putting some, at least it's being characterized in the press as moving back to more local control of certain standards. So I think that conversation will be, will be interesting. And although, because our space issues are not legislative issues, but I don't believe that, that our, the opportunity to speak with our legislators should miss the chance to discuss with them what's happening with space issues and our relationship with the state and what they can do with us to try to move, move forward that agenda as well. So I look forward to that. Happy to take any questions about this. Want to thank Ms. Chalupski and Ms. Gatto for joining me in reviewing and putting them together, putting together the first draft. And happy to take wordsmithing offline, but major substantive questions here so that we can move to second reading, I hope.
Questions for Ms. Stone? I'll just add two. One is that the timing's a little odd because we're going to be sending this, we may be sending this before we know what happens to the statement of interest, before the MSBA for the high school. However, they will be, we will be talking to them, I would hope, after we have an answer. So it might be worth just acknowledging that we are hoping to learn the answer before we actually meet with them. That's one. And number two, it just struck me that in, on the high-stakes testing paragraph, I think there were some very valuable concerns raised about not having high-stakes tests. And so I'm wondering if there's some way to say some of the concerns raised were about not having standard, about not having high-stakes tests were X, Y, and Z, and we hope to have a robust discussion about how not to take our eye off the ball in terms of equity, in terms of accountability. I mean, just basically, there were some important values that were, that we want to make sure continue even if this legislation is passed. And most of that's on the second page, but the second page is a more general statement that doesn't necessarily have to do with the legislation. So I guess the question is, is it worth reflecting more of what, what we fundamentally hope to see?
So what, so what I reflected in, in this document was the conversation that we had at the table about the possibility of H-340 being amended to reflect just that conversation that we had and to address educational equity and the role, again, of student assessment, including standardized testing and promoting a culture of accountability. I, I thought that that was reflecting what you raised. If you feel that it should be done differently, I'm happy to take that as a, as a consideration.
And other people might have more specific language than I do. It's just more of a general sense. And this, we could do wordsmith offline, but it might be worth.
Okay. Going to be happy to take suggestions for people who think that there's a different way to articulate that.
I think the important part is that this is the starting off point to discuss it with the legislators and all those issues will come up at the meeting, I assume. I don't think that anybody's going to be shy about talking about, you know, their thoughts about what the vote was and what, what their ideas are. So.
Okay, I know, that's helpful. I just want to know if anybody has more specific thoughts? They can just send them to you.
Yeah. Yeah, if you have this, I mean, thoughts, no. Thoughts you should express here, if you have specific language.
Language.
Subject to, I mean, in, in response to what the chair was, was raising and you have ideas for language that would work for you better than the language that's here around those issues, I would love to see that.
Okay. All right. So that is our first reading. We shall leave it there. Thank you very much.
Second reading.
Yes, Ms. Coin? Yeah, second reading on the 17th. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for shepherding this, as always. Policy review, Dr. Jackson. And I think, okay. We're going to, because we're going to have a, a school committee action later on that talks about a policy, specific policy, there isn't a particular, do you want to just do a?
I just want to do a quick FYI.
Yeah, okay. Perfect.
So first, I just want to make sure everybody is aware that the date that's on the calendar is a new date. It was the 10th and is now the 9th at 8:30, so I just want to make sure folks caught that. It was not a typo. At that meeting, we'll be discussing the new regulations and requirements for our restraint policy. We'll be reviewing an initial draft of the language that's required now by law to go into that policy and figure out how to move so that we are in compliance by the first of the year, both in terms of the policy and also the procedures for that particular policy. And then the other thing we'll be talking about is the finance assistance policy. We'll, we'll review that, do an initial review at that meeting. Given how our meetings go, those are the only two things I hope to cover. And depending on how the conversation goes tonight with regards to the admissions policy, we may or may not need to leave time for that as well. So that's it.
Any questions? Okay. The superintendent transition process. So since the last meeting, we have, I think since the last meeting, we've actually hired a, an executive search consultant by the name of Jim Hughie of Atlantic Research. We're delighted. Thank you to Helen and Barbara and Lisa and Rebecca, who all shepherded us through that process and got us to a great point. And thank you also to Dave Janikakis and Mary Ellen Dunn, who, who worked their magic to make it all come together in a pretty short period of time, relatively speaking for government processes. Always have to get that out there. And so we're delighted. Jim's terrific. He Skypes with us often and he's a lot of, and he's funny. And he is really committed to transparency and openness and a lot of public process, which is great for us. It's, it's very Brookline. And so the other thing that's happened is Dr. Jackson has agreed to be voluntold to, to be our coordinator on the superintendent search. We are, we're not going to be forming a separate superintendent search committee and so Dr. Jackson is going to wave her hands like this, much like a conductor, and all kinds of magic will happen. Do you, do you want to give just a couple minutes about where we are in terms of the principles and then some of the, the key activities that we're?
Happy to. And I would love to put on our next school committee meeting agenda a chance to give a fuller update because by then there will be more to talk about. We're really excited to be working with Jim. He's great. He's incredibly open and also incredibly connected nationally to lots of amazing people and so we are excited to tap his networks. And he's already demonstrated that he's got a crack team behind him who has helped us develop an advertisement and get that out. And so for folks who are interested in seeing it, it is online. It should be, I believe, where's Ben? Is it on our website now?
Not yet, shortly.
Not yet, shortly. Maybe before you leave tonight, okay. But it has been posted in EdWeek and a couple of other national sites. And for those who may dismay that it doesn't feel full, it's because it's meant to tickle people's interests. It's not meant to be the full job description, but it is meant to say, hello, we are hiring. We're a great place to come and be a superintendent. Please give us a call and check it out. And so Jim has, in fact, already started to get some responses to that ad and so it's clearly doing its job. The other thing that will happen in short order, as a result of conversations we've had about how to get input from the broader community and community groups around the actual profile, so going that next layer deep into, okay, we know we're hiring as superintendent, but what do we want? What do we want to keep? What do we want different? What do we want the same? We are starting a series of meetings that will kick off the week of December 14th. So stay tuned, actually, early next week. Ben and I will be posting the timeline for the next couple of weeks so folks can both see the process and the different steps and the places where they're invited to give input and the different ways they'll be invited to give input, including an online survey as well as reaching out to Jim one-on-one. So we are also trying to proactively communicate in advance of these things and that process will go through the first few weeks of January. So hopefully, we will give folks ample time to share their perspectives. I think that's where we are at the moment. I'm not sure if I'm leaving anything else out that I should say, but, but stay tuned. And, oh, one quick thing for the public, on our website now, there is a place to go within this, is it in, Ben, can you, actually, can you come say where it is? Where people sign up to get their regular updates because I think it's important for people to know that that's there.
Ms. Chalupski, welcome.
Hello, everyone. So you can get there easily from the homepage on the website. Anything that says superintendent search on the homepage will get you there. And there are, I think at this point, three different links. One, in the, on the photos, that scroll, there's a superintendent search banner, which is very big. And then on the quick links and the updates, which are a little bit further down the page, you'll see two links for superintendent, superintendent search. You go there, you'll get the current update, which is the hiring of Atlantic Research Partners, a sort of outline of the process as much as we know now, and then also a link to sign up for further updates. Okay?
Perfect. Thank you so much, Dr. Jackson. For those who are about to coordinate us, we salute you. And thank you, Rebecca, for adding the fact that we have a storied history of citizen action. That, that phrase, was that you?
No, 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 no. I wanted to thank.
I almost had a heart attack. We actually want somebody to come work here, so.
I wanted to thank Rebecca for really making it very Brookline, the ad. I think that she did some great work in editing and she deserves some credit there.
Have we sharpened up?
My husband told me not to have a heart attack about, that we have a whole storied history of citizen action. I don't know what that means. But, okay. It's beautiful. All right, any other questions or updates? Anything we forgot? I mean, all of you have been, yeah. Mr. Glover, yeah.
Updated.
Oh, okay. Oh, sorry. Anything else on the superintendent transition that we forgot to mention? Okay. Ms. Glover.
Just briefly, I wanted to update folks on the most recent Steps to Success board meeting, which was November 18th. A few highlights from that meeting. There are three Steps to Success seniors that have been inducted into the National Honor Society, which is great. Congratulations to them as well as all the other National Honor Society inductees. As you saw on the calendar, the, the annual fundraiser Step Up for Our Stars is April 13th. The honoree is Ken Goldstein, former chair of the Board of Selectmen. We got a great presentation while we were there on the Steps to Success College Success Initiative, excuse me, which is a program that is intended to and does work with students after they leave Brookline High School in whatever capacity they choose to go forward, whether it's college or the workforce or whatever. So it's not just college, even though it is called the College Success Initiative. Just a few statistics that came from that presentation. We have a graduation rate of Steps to Success students since 2006 of, this is high school graduation, of 93%. That compares to the general BHS graduation rate of 91%. Since 2008, there have been 72 Steps to Success college graduates and the percentage of Steps to Success college enrollees who graduate within six years is 76%, which compares to the Massachusetts low-income student rate of 14% very well. So I thought that was, that was pretty interesting. And the, so the program seems to be, be doing a nice job. The last thing I'll mention is that the, that Steps to Success is moving and is about to file, if they haven't already, their application to become a 501(c)(3) organization. For a long time, they, they haven't been. There's been a progression in terms of how the organization has been structured. They have been, for a while, a Massachusetts charitable corporation, but that doesn't get you all of the same benefits that being a 501(c)(3) federally gets you. Donors over the past few years have been able to get the tax benefits that a 501(c)(3) do get as a result of a 501(c)(3) sponsor organization that Steps to Success has worked with. But by going forward with a full 501(c)(3) application and, and hopefully acceptance, they'll no longer need that sponsor and it will sort of lower, it'll make it easier for them to attract certain donors because even with that sponsor that they have currently, there are certain large donors and grants, large donors that wouldn't contribute and grants that they are not eligible for. So it will help them in their fundraising going forward.
I don't want to interrupt, but I have a question. But their funding structure, in addition to the donations that they get, which obviously make a big difference, is through the housing and through the school department, correct?
Yes. I believe that's correct. You're, you're going to quiz me on the budget and I'm going to get it wrong.
No, I was just, so I'm just trying to figure out how the 501- No, I was just, so I'm just trying to figure out how the 501(c)(3) works in then. Maybe I just don't get it.
Well, the organization itself is organized as a 501(c)(3). The employees that are, this is the way I understand it, the employees that are funded are employees of the Brookline Public Schools or, well, yeah. And even from, even from the money, funds that they may get in certain years from the Housing Authority, I think flow through the Brookline Public Schools. Others may know more about that. So, it's not as if that those funds are going directly into those coffers, as far as I know.
Okay. All right. Good. Moving, moving right along.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry, Dr. Jackson.
A quick fabulous story. I got a chance to attend the, I believe it was specific to the high school, the High Schools Educators of Color event earlier this week at the Golden Temple. Per Elaine O'Sullivan's report out regarding our efforts to hire and to generate more of a diverse pool, Dr. Chris Vick, Keith Lozama, Malcolm Cawthorn, Deb Holman, and probably other people I'm forgetting, Melanie Alexander, were all a part of organizing what was an amazing event with an amazing turnout. There were approximately 100 people who flowed through the Golden Temple between about 5:30 and 7:30, and there was a wonderful program where folks were asked to get to know one another and share their experiences. And I remembered, because the gentleman, one of the gentlemen from Steps to Success spoke about his growing up and his educational experience, department heads spoke, some of the deans spoke, encouraging the folks who were there to consider positions in Brookline as they come down the pike. And there were people there from Newton, from Boston, from charter schools, private schools, and other public schools. So it was a great event, and I hear we're going to see more of that, which is awesome. So, just wanted to share.
And I also just wanted to report briefly from the 21st Century Fund Board Meeting, which was mostly a celebration of a very successful, it wasn't called a gala, it was called a bowl-arama, the bowl-arama. They, the finances of it went wonderfully, the feedback that they've gotten on the survey that went out to a number of people who attended was excellent. They had a huge number of teachers who were able to be there this year, and the board discussed a number of different ways that they might try to improve upon it, in addition to improving the food, which they, everybody recognized was the least successful part of the evening. But fortunately, the rest of the evening was so much fun that it made up for it. And it was certainly, they were, they made above their targets in terms of what they had budgeted for the evening. So that was all very good news. We had a brief discussion of a preliminary set of things that the Program Committee is looking at, all of which will come to the School Committee filtered through the 21st Century Fund's long process of reviewing new things. But one of them that they did, one of the things that the Program Committee is talking about with the Headmaster is this more out-of-the-box thinking around recruiting a more diverse pool of teachers and administrators at the high school. And we talked a little bit about our system-wide interest in doing the same thing, and just talked about how their efforts, if the 21st Century Fund gets involved, which it may or may not, but certainly how the efforts at the high school can be reflected system-wide throughout our efforts to address diversity in hiring and improve our record. So, it was good.
Great, thank you. Mr. Chang?
Yes, I'd like to report briefly, I attended the CPAC meeting on the 20th, and Dr. Schmuckler was in attendance to provide some clarification on the partner, the parent-partner program that I discussed last month. And, you know, she provided a lot of additional input, as well as parents being sensitive about privacy, especially use of Brookline email address. So I think that was really well received, and, you know, Dr. Schmuckler did a terrific job. And in addition, it was also expressed by Liz and her team about the special ed para, which obviously is a very timely conversation. And, you know, I think they may have something to talk about in public hearing today, but it is timely, and this is something that we are actively working on it, you know, from our vantage point as well.
Thank you. Any other liaisons? I was supposed to say, when I went to the race rails conversation yesterday, did they? I was on a flight. Anyway, there was another race rails at the high school last night, which was apparently interesting, and I'm sorry I missed it. Okay, moving on. Public comment, and I just want to note that, public comment, there's a sign-up sheet there, but just to be clear, we are having the public hearing on the 9th Elementary School at 7:30. So if anybody wants to speak on that, I would really encourage you to wait until 7:30, because you will have the selectmen and a lot more people listening to you. So, is there anybody, would you mind just running over there and grabbing it, see if there's anybody signed up? Elizabeth, are you signed up? It's okay, it's, I'll just, if, is there anybody on the sheet?
Yes.
Okay, why don't we do this, and then I'll just call on you, that's fine. All right, so we have three people signed up, Judy Myers, Alessandro Decredito, and Elizabeth Mishka. So Judy, do you want to start? Welcome home, Ms. Myers, to our former School Committee Chair.
A lot easier to be on that side of the table than on this. I just want to ask you, and I'm happy to go ahead.
Is your mic on?
I have no idea.
Yeah, it is.
It's green.
Okay, great.
I should remember that. Given that this addresses specific policy language and statutory language, and you're going to be addressing the policy in a few minutes, I don't know whether it makes more sense to speak about it then. If not, I realize this is my time for public comment, I would just then ask everyone to take out the actions that they're going to be looking at, we're on what, number four? To take out number six, because that's what I'm going to be addressing, and if you have the-
Robin's making copies.
Yeah, I was going to say, if you have the-
So why don't you get started and we'll start.
The language in front of you, it will be easier. Okay.
Great.
All right, sorry about that, I just wanted to-
No, thank you.
Clarifying, okay. So, I am here, and it's, we're, you're going to be talking tonight for a second reading on the admissions, the school admissions policy, what we also call the residency portion of the policy. And I just want to start out by saying that I really commend you for what you are doing. I am well aware, I've sat on your side, I've been part of working on this policy in the past, I'm well aware that we have to solve very real problems of overcrowded classrooms, limited resources, not to mention the fact that the disruption that occurs in our schools when children enroll in our schools for very short periods of time. Specifically, I think this issue comes up with children coming from their, with their parents from foreign countries and residing here for a temporary period of time. So, that said, we also have state law, which controls what we do, and which was not written with Brookline's particular problems in mind. So, the purpose of Chapter 76, Section 1, as I'm sure you all know, is to compel the attendance of, to school, and compel the education of all children of school age. And then, under Section 5 of that statute, it says that every person shall have a right to attend the public schools of the town where he or she actually resides. Okay? Now, the operative language here is actually resides. There is nothing in this portion of the statute that talks about living here temporarily or permanently. There is a reference to living in Brookline temporarily in the following section, and that's Section 6 of the statute, and that's applicable, that's applicable to other situations, children who are living here temporarily, not with their parents or not, you know, with their parents, in the residence of their parents. That, as far as I have been able to glean, Section 6 does not apply here, we are absolutely under Section 5. Okay. So, once we're under Section 5, if a child is deemed to be actually residing here, we're under an obligation to educate that child. All right. So, the policy language that's being proposed and actually, let me, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to get to it now. And frankly, there was reference to this in the old policy that we've been dealing with as well. It talks about residence as a place where a person dwells permanently, not temporarily. This is not new language, we've had it in our policy before, and I'm not suggesting that anybody's done anything by putting it in here this way. I'm just saying that when you take this language and then go right, you know, right later in the paragraph in saying temporary residence in the town of Brookline solely for the purposes of attending the public schools of Brookline shall not be considered residency, that does not apply, that sentence does not apply to children who are here with parents from foreign countries. So, we're back, we're back to, under the statute, you just have to show actual residency. Your policy now suggests that it's presumed if a student is residing here fewer, three months or fewer, the student does not meet the residency eligibility requirements. So, it's a rebuttable presumption, but the burden of proof is on the student and his or her family to prove residency in the first place. So it's not about the length of time that a student's here, it's about the very real threshold of saying, I, we've come here to set up residency. Setting up residency is not all that easy. When I was on the School Committee, I was part of a group, I don't know whether, I think I was on the policy of the committee, I don't even know, I think I may have been Chair of the Policy Committee. We put language in this policy specifically to say how you had to verify your residency. There were three categories, category A, category B, category C. Sorry, am I running out of time? Shoot, okay. And it's not easy to do, okay, so let me just say, what I think may be happening here is that it's a matter of enforcement. Category A talks about having a copy of some kind of current lease, or getting an affidavit from a landlord, that's fairly easy to get. But you also need something from category B, which is setting up, putting utilities in one's own name. People don't usually do that for one, or two, or even three months, because that's not something that you do unless you're actually going to be residing here. So, I'm wondering if it's just the way we've been enforcing the policy, if we need a three months, the three-month threshold. So, I guess that, I mean, we're, I don't want to belabor that, but I will just say that the juxtaposition in the, in the current policy of the first sentence of the policy saying that residence is the primary place where a person dwells permanently, not temporarily, and then in that same paragraph, talking about residing here fewer than three months, it's at least confusing to someone reading, you would think, if you're coming to this district, that if you're in that category, you're going to be out the door. So, I'm happy at any point, and I will just say, if this is delayed, if the final vote's delayed, I am happy to have dialogue, this isn't something you lecture about, I'm also happy to talk to Town Council, we spent hours going over many policies together, and if she can convince me that I'm incorrect by case law, I will step back.
Thank you, Ms. Myers, and thank you for attending the policy subcommittee meetings and emailing the committee your thoughts as well, we appreciate it. Second item, second speaker, Ms. Decredito. And it's a, it's a five-minute moment.
Yeah, we'll try to keep into that. All right, so, good evening. I would like to bring attention to the School Committee members to an issue that is of very deep concerns for the parents of children that attend the special education programs in Brookline. I do speak as a parent, but I also do speak as a liaison of the CPAC for Ranco School. So I kind of hear many other parents telling their stories, I do have a conversation with my colleagues, and say, other liaisons, and also with the rest, the teachers, the staff. So the situation that has been actually now active for the last three months is a practically chronic shortage of paraprofessionals in several classrooms in different schools, but especially in Ranco, when I have a personal experience in. There has been no default from the side of the principals or the administration in looking for those, this personnel. They have been interviewing like crazy, even during the summer, in order to be ready for the start of the school year. The results of all these interviews have been to really find a number of candidates, good candidates that choose Brookline because it's a good school system to be in and start a career if you want. But there are also candidates who came maybe, and, or resigned just even before starting, or does resign, just said, oh, I'm sorry, I found something else. So they just disappeared before they started, or disappeared a week after they started. So they kind of crumble in the hands of the teachers. This has created a situation that is extremely serious, because some of these classrooms do have, I would say, a really sick situation of temps that do alternate day after day, so they cover the position. I mean, the children are not left unattended, but they are attended by people who see them the first time that day. The classroom teacher, sped teacher do not have the time to train them, to teach the student, and do not have the time to really be effective. Also, the qualification of a temp or the substitute are not as high as one that is hired with a good, you know, vetting process. So this has created a number of problems that are rippling through the school, and actually, they do create problems in the classroom. These kids need support, and one of the supports they need are also behavioral nature, that some of these parents are not able to provide, if not properly trained. And Brookline provides training, but if you stay, if you are there for some time, not if you, you know, show up and just disappear after a day or so. So, we are extremely concerned as parents, and when we ask teachers or the paraprofessionals, we do not talk to them directly, we do not have that particular contact, we are not allowed somehow to have this chatty situation. But if we interview, there are a number of issues that come out. Number of towns surrounding Brookline are also in the same difficult spot, but somehow we find ourselves in a more difficult situation. And one of the issues that is brought mostly is their economic treatment, and the contract that they fill especially, and I know that this is a very hot topic, so I'm not trying to push an agenda here, but there is a contract that is being discussed right now, and the economic treatment is definitely part of the issue. It's a tough market, those, these people can't find a job anywhere else, the private sector is hiring them like crazy, so public school may be not the best place for them to be at this point, and we need to fight for the best. So I would like as a parent just to, you know, really press on, please do consider, you know, working on finalizing a new contract for not only the teachers, but also the paraprofessionals in a very, let's say, speedy way. We do feel the weight of this lack, and we do feel it on everyday life, and our kids feel it, and actually, the school feels it. It's really a ripple effect, you can see it at every level, and unfortunately, that's not the positive thing. There is not only that, we definitely want to make the condition of the contracts such that a person finds Brookline a desirable place to come and work for a long time. We used to have, I'm an old parent, so my child has been in the system for many years, we used to have paraprofessionals for one, two, three years. They were educated in Brookline, and they became exceptional sped teachers after that. What we see now is people who flee, you know, they come, one month, two months, they flee. They're scared, maybe, tough conditions, I don't know what it is, but we are extremely concerned. So please just consider that the parents are concerned, we would like to have a strong contract, something that protects our kids with the help of professionals, that paraprofessionals that are high qualified and well-paid, I mean, they deserve it, they work hard, our kids are not easy, and I can tell you, I'm the mom, I would like to do that for so many hours in the morning, so I definitely am with that. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Ms. Mishka?
Hi. I won't speak at all.
Hi, Elizabeth Mishka. Also a CPAC item today around not just... I'm going to use Devotion as the sample in the building process, in the design phase and the building. But this is now looking at wherever we renovate or when we go new building. And I've learned this through experience is the one elevator issue at Devotion now for 1,000 kids in the core doesn't fly. I don't know that it flies with the fire department for taking out people in wheelchairs. If it breaks down and you answer, "Well, we'll fix it." We had a student who lost four days of school recently because we couldn't get the elevator fixed for four days. The parents were very happy to take the homework home, talk to the teacher on the phone, but that's not right. She couldn't get in the building into her classroom? Not good. I don't know how much elevators are. And I know that even the budget now for Webster Street is more money. But if you have a building with 1,000 people in it and the architect is probably saying, "Well, we can get through legally and the whatever." Think about what is the right thing? If it's as big as a football field, you're going to want to have a central elevator and you're going to want to have a backup egress near, you know, the drive-up, drop-off on the side street where everyone's doing... you know, the front door, yeah, but that side door is big news in the morning and afternoon. Why isn't there an elevator there for anyone who visits? I'm bringing guest speakers and wheelchairs, two of them this week. Dun-dun-dun-dun. You know, it's not... So, elevators are like the basic, like the ramp. I know it's expensive. But in thinking of both Devo and thinking of anything else we go forward, very, very seriously, there's got to be a cheaper second elevator to go in. And there has to be made the space for these kids going up and down all day. Thank you.
Thank you. As you know, it's in our policy to public... to comment on public comment, but thank you for coming. That's all we have signed up. Is there anyone who else... sure, of course, wishes to make public comments? That's fine to say your name.
Hi, my name is Mary Ellen O'Leary and I'm a teacher at the Brookline preschool at Putterham. And I'm just coming to talk tonight about the materials fee, which I know is a topic. Last year, I applied for my children to attend Brookline and my son did get accepted to the Baker School. My daughters, there was not space for. And I just want to start by saying how blown away my husband and I are by the education that our son is receiving. The schools are amazing. I love teaching in Brookline. I believe in the system. I'm committed to the school system. And I'll just give you a quick little story. My son the other day said, "Mom, you know, my new school isn't like a school. It's like a fun place I get to go to every day." And as a parent, I was like, "What? Wait, let me get my recorder." I wanted...I mean, it was just amazing to hear that. So, yes, it's unfortunate that our daughters didn't get a spot. It's been hard on the family. I'm not here to complain. I'm here to say how grateful I am and how wonderful the school is. I want to be here for a long time and I would love for my daughters to be able to be part of that as well. So, my opinion of the materials fee is, you know, we would love to be able to have all of our kids here. I know it's a hot topic and space is an issue. But just as a mom and as a teacher here, I just wanted to share that with you. So, thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to make public comment? Okay, thank you. Thank you all for coming. We have an interim superintendent's report. Dr. Connolly.
Item number one on the superintendent's report will be discussed under item 6B, so I'll jump over that for now. I'll go to item number two, which talks about the elementary principal search process. It's well underway. We plan to post the positions in the newspaper and the other sites on December 7th. We...I have sat a meeting with parents and faculty in our schools that have vacancies to form our search committees. I've had a meeting with the Lawrence parents earlier this week. I have the Pierce parent tomorrow. I have the Lawrence and Pierce staffs early next week. So, the process is well underway. We hope to have our search committees in place by December 21st. The deadline for the principalship postings will go until June 29th. It's an extended period of time because we hope to generate the strongest pool of candidates possible. So, that means February and March will be the time that the search work actually takes place and the search committees will be very, very involved. We're hoping to have the final candidates identified by the... by late March, perhaps the March 21st school community meeting if all goes well. And I just wanted everyone to be aware that the search is in process. And if any parents or faculty have questions, please feel free to give me a call. We'd love to get everybody involved. That's our goal, to have everybody feel a part of this very important process.
I'm a principal who is looking for a job and I'm interested in a couple of the schools. Can you apply to more than one school?
Absolutely, yeah. We're doing four, potentially four separate searches. We'll have four separate search committees. And if the search committees identify candidates that have applied for more than one school, they could potentially recommend those candidates as semifinalists. And the way the process will work is the 12-member search committee at each school, four parents, four teachers, four administrators, will recommend after interviewing many, many candidates, perhaps three semifinalists to be... receive a second interview with the senior staff here at the central office and a few of the other townwide officials. It's quite possible that if we get three from each school, we'll have a total of 12 candidates to look at. And there may be an overlap and have... there may be some candidates that are finalists in more than one school. But through the second round of interviews, if they surface as the strong candidates, then it would be our job to try to place them at the most appropriate school.
Yeah, that was sort of the thought I had that sometimes, you know, somebody might apply for one school, but, you know, we know that from what their characteristics are, they would be a better fit at another school and...
And that'll take...hopefully take care of itself at the Level 2, where we do the second interviews and the reference checks. And even site visits might be involved. So, I think at this point, candidates will be encouraged to apply for whatever school they feel is the right match for them.
And one other piece that we've done in the past, I'm not sure if this is part of what's happening now, but usually the interview committees talk about the strengths and weaknesses of candidates, but don't really rank order them.
That's very important, Helen. I'm glad you mentioned that.
Yeah.
As I meet with the parents and staff prepping for this process, I make that very clear that if you, for example, pass on three semifinalists, we're looking for you to identify... each committee to identify three candidates they feel would be successful at their school, that they could live with any one of the three. We do not want them ranked ordered because we want to... many times, you lose a candidate to another school system and you don't want the community feels that they lost the number one candidate. So, we're looking for three, four semifinalists for a second round of interviews. And then it'll be our responsibility to match them to the best school, to the appropriate school.
Right, right.
Item number three is, and I touched on it earlier under the Capitol report, we have a long-range enrollment projection that we've been working diligently on to further analyze. A detailed analysis of our long-range enrollment projections has now been completed. This analysis identifies where classroom shortages by grade level in each school may occur over the next five or six years until a ninth school can be in operation. This information is valuable as it will provide the school department and Mrs. Simmons from the main... the building department with classroom need information by school well in advance of when it will be necessary to find...fulfill that need. Our enrollment projections continue to support the need for a ninth school with a shortfall of as many as 30 classrooms between now and the school year 2021, 2022. Clearly, until a ninth school is constructed, our ability to provide the number of classrooms needed to support our current recommended class size guidelines, which by the way, K-3 is a max of 20...recommended. K-3 a max of 22 and grades four to eight a max of 25 students per class may need to be compromised. For example, in school year...next year, 2016, 2017 school year, our enrollment projections indicate the need for six additional classrooms in the fallen schools. The Devotion school, one additional grade five class. We have four sections...we have five sections of grade four going into four sections of grade five. That'll be taken care of because grade five is transferring to upper Devotion and they have the additional classroom space. Heath, we're looking at the potential need for two classes. The grade two, next year, we're projecting 72 students in grade two. That would be three classes of 24. So, the idea would be to go from three to four sections of grade two at Heath. And grade eight, moving from two sections in grade seven this year to three sections, hopefully... I'm sorry, three sections in grade seven this year going into two sections currently in grade eight. We hope to make that three sections in grade eight. Right now, we don't have a solution for Heath and that's something we want to explore. Lawrence, we have a need for one additional grade four class. And luckily, Lawrence has a classroom available for that additional grade four class. Pierce, we have an additional need for a grade three class. Again, it's four sections of grade two going into... I'm sorry, five sections of grade two going into four sections of grade three. So, we need to add a section in grade three. And we also do not at this point have a solution for that shortfall of one classroom. That's being explored. And Ranco has a need for a grade five class. Again, three sections of grade four going into two sections of grade five drives a need for a third section of grade five. And luckily, Ranco does have a classroom available. So, right now, we have potentially a need for three or four classrooms next year because with the analysis so closely now, we have several months now to kind of go visit those schools and work out solutions. Solutions could be creating classes from existing space in the schools, additional modular classrooms, additional rental space, and realistically, over the next five years, until a ninth school is online, we'll probably have to face some increased class size. Hopefully, we'll keep it to a minimum. So, that's what we're doing. And I think, for example, next Tuesday afternoon at 1:00, I'll be visiting two or three of these schools with the building department to try to start that investigation of how we can best meet the needs of our space shortage in these next few years until we have a ninth school in line. And number four, any questions, comments?
Yep.
Sure. Just Lincoln, Baker and Driscoll. They're just even next year. No chance that there's a freeing up of any classrooms in those?
Right now, Michael, the projections call for those schools to be... have the same number...the need for the same number of classrooms they currently have. For example, Baker just had the two modules put online. So, that's going to meet the need at Baker for a few years at least. But again, this report points out that over the next five or six years, that shortfall of 30 classrooms will impact all the schools. And we hope a ninth school will address that. Yes, Beth?
So, one issue that Mary Ellen raised in the finance subcommittee and it was also included in the first quarter report is that similar to the constraints that we're seeing for our classrooms, that there are also constraints for special education classrooms that we may be bumping up against in our ability to expand those programs. And so, similar...I find this very, very helpful. I think similar to getting a sense of the classrooms at the different grade level, it would be helpful to get a similar view and detail around what sort of constraints we're hitting up against for special education classrooms.
Actually, Beth, that's something that David has... is the chairman of the Capitol Subcommittee has asked for. And so, Charlie Simmons and I will be developing that over the next few weeks to try to give us... give David that full detail.
I commend Mary Ellen for raising that for us.
Well, the other side benefit of a ninth school would be that spaces right now that are being used for classrooms, that are full-sized classrooms, will then be freed up for these other specialty needs. And so, we're talking about a shortfall of maybe 29 to 30 classrooms that a ninth school would address. But once that ninth school is online, it's going to free up space right now that's being used for classrooms for specialty areas. You know, so it's going to solve many of our problems if we do get the ninth school. Other comments? Number four, we have a winter and spring coaching position needed. In fact, Peter Rittenberg is in the audience today, tonight. He's had our meeting. He recently informed Mary Ellen Dunn, myself, that he would like to offer the following sports programs on a trial basis in the school year 2015, 2016, this school year during the winter and spring seasons. A fencing program, a squash sports program and an ultimate frisbee program. Peter explained that he has a very large number of students that have expressed interest in these three programs and he really feels that if we could offer these programs, it would provide a very worthwhile, positive opportunity for these kids in late afternoon during the winter and spring months. Peter indicates that budget-wise, the revenue that we would get from their participation would more than cover the operational costs of these new coaching positions and activities. And so, I...based on this fact, in fact, we do have adequate funding, I plan to approve these requests as I feel it's going to provide that much-needed programs for these kids. And I really applaud Mr. Rittenberg for taking the initiative to look for ways to keep the kids all actively involved. This is kind of an informational issue for the school committee. We're aware that we're bringing on new programs on a trial basis this year. And we will...we will make sure that the proper postings and hiring procedures are followed. Yes?
I just want to express my support for the decision to do that. As a new high school parent of a student who is an athlete, winter is a desert wasteland for him and for his colleagues. And so, I'm excited to hear that there will be some team options, not just training in the gym, singular options. And I think, you know, another way to think about how important this is just has to do with the fact that we all struggle in the winter not to be sedentary. And I think it's really important for our kids to also be very active in the wintertime. So, I'm excited that these are possible to offer. So, thank you, Coach.
You go first. No, now after you, ma'am.
So, as a former high school parent, I certainly echo what Dr. Jackson just raised about sports. I have different questions about this, not so much about whether or not it would be great to have these sports, but I understand that the user fee revenue would be generated. I just...there's a... there's a whole series of questions that we usually apply to new programs, sports included, including the...I know that there's been a lot of interest in these sports. I would be interested in seeing a breakdown of who's signed up for them, whether they are being equally... whether they are equally accessible to girls as well as boys, whether or not we have a reflection of our student population signing up for them. And if so, what are the other costs of any of these? I know in terms of fencing, there is equipment to be rented. I wondered if that...if that equipment is being provided to the students, if they're going to be expected to rent it themselves, if they're going to an off-site place to participate in any of these teams or how they're getting there? How are we handling transportation? There's just a whole series of questions that I would love to see answered before just saying this is great because I don't...I'm not aware of having gone through that process of asking and getting those questions answered.
We did talk...and we did discuss a number of those issues We did talk, we did discuss a number of those issues with Mr. Rittenberg, and Peter, do you want to address any of those issues now?
So, I might suggest, we have ten minutes to do thirty more minutes of agenda, which we're not going to get to. So, Pete, if you want to, if there's anything you want to say, you should definitely come up and say it. If not, that's okay.
Well, we, yeah.
Or we can address it by email.
Well, what we could do, Peter and I could work out these answers, and I could share them on the seventeen.
Since you're here.
Yeah. All right. So, I think we can provide, we have information not at our fingertips right now, but I think we can certainly provide, and I think very much to your satisfaction, some of these questions that you're asking. And I would just say in general that our goal, and we've been working on this for at least four years, conceptually, is that we have burgeoning enrollment, we all know that, and we're trying to, you know, we've seen in two years that the tidal wave of enrollment is real in the athletic department. Our programs are being subscribed more heavily and oversubscribed in some cases. We are cutting many more student athletes than we would like to. We're creating more opportunities, and the goal in creating the opportunities is to not tax our current resources, both financial and physical, because we're running out of space. We're looking at plans that involve potentially losing gyms. So, that's where the outside facilities come in, and they take an enormous burden off of our, you know, the BHS resources in the winter, because it's really all gyms, rinks, pools, et cetera. But that's the general goal that, and as Dr. Conley mentioned, we want to make them budget-neutral, to use our existing fee structure to create a theoretical budget and try to work within that so that it's not taxing the town's financial resources. I don't know if that's unique, but it certainly is what, how we, how our operational expenses can work.
Peter, you mentioned yesterday that we have roughly, you know, between forty and fifty kids that have expressed interest in these two programs.
Yes.
Do you have a breakdown of the gender involved?
Yes. The two, so the two winter sports are both at fifty, and actually a little over fifty now. Fencing is no cut. We can accommodate everybody. That breakdown is dead even, boys and girls, which helps us because in our overall programs, we do have more boys than girls. But, you know, obviously, if we can do an even, that's helping our balance. Squash is not quite there. I think it was thirty-eight and twelve. You know, we'd like to see that better, but there's certainly, there's certainly, you know, a healthier number of girls in that program right now. Ultimate frisbee, we project to be not quite even, but more, closer to fifty-fifty break. I would also mention that these students, most of what we've looked at in terms of registration, a lot of the students are not doing other sports in BHS. So, they're really, there's some new students to athletics, some pretty, some pretty interesting mixes of kids, and we're excited about it. I mean, we'll see where it goes, but we're very excited about what we're seeing in the early stages, just registration-wise.
I think this is, you know, a fantastic thing to start new programs, and over the years, we've always, you know, had different sports that have come in, like women's ice hockey and women's wrestling and things like that, that are different. But usually, they started out, or some of the ones have started out as a club and not as a team that goes and plays other teams, and so the cost is much less. Is that something you're considering, or is that not what this is?
Well, we think, I mean, we certainly would consider it. I don't know what's coming along in the future in terms of sports, but I think that sort of thing has happened, particularly with squash, that there has been a group in Brookline High School that's found places to play and practice and gained momentum, and we were very fortunate. Windsor has built courts, and we've got a relationship with them, a facility relationship already. And so, there's, there are five brand-new courts. It's a unique opportunity, I think, for us. It's very close to our campus.
And there are other high schools who play these sports, too?
Yep. Not too many public schools, but we do have kids who are already participating in those sports, fencing as well, and it's an opportunity for them to compete for their school, and I think that's also a good thing.
I just want to remind people that fencing, the discussion about fencing started out last year, went on for a very long time because of some holdup in getting the coach approved. I know you're looking, I know because, well, am I correct that this started last year?
Correct, right.
It went on, and finally, things worked out so that the fencing was approved, but at that point in time, most of the kids who were involved had made other arrangements. So, that has been in the works at least for two years. What I like about this list of sports is they are outside of the usual range of what you see, and therefore, they might appeal to a different audience than the kids that are always, you know, that you're seeing up, seeing, signing up all the time, and I think that's a real plus.
I just want to be clear that I'm not objecting in any way to the development of new sports. I think it's wonderful, and I commend Pete and your staff for working aggressively on this, but I do think it would be helpful, much the same way that we developed for foreign travel and foreign trips and out-of-state, to have a form that's available that asks all of these questions to be answered as these, as these new programs are developed so that, so that Pete and others in the position that you're in right now are not put in a hot seat. That's not the intention. The intention is simply to make sure that our students are well-represented, their interests are well-represented, and not to put a drag on creating sports like this or any other programs, but simply to make sure that the things, that our core values of equity and safety and all of those things are represented in the development of the program. So, maybe it's, maybe it can just be taken care of with a, with a form that we use in the future. But thank you, Pete, for that.
So, are there any other questions for, Mr. Con?
Just on the note of the gender breakdown, something that's, I think, good about it and important, that none of these sports are gender-binary, and there is a number of students that I know who don't follow the binary, they're participating in these sports, and they haven't had safe opportunities to do sports before at the high school. So, I think it's a very good opportunity.
Good. That's a great perspective. Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Rittenberg?
I mean, I will, we will, we'll work on fine-tuning some of these details you're looking for, but I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here today.
Thank you very much.
Many, we're looking at ninety and probably another, you know, it could be a hundred-and-fifty between the three sports that we mentioned, so thank you.
Well, we're growing new customers every day, so they are on their way. Get ready with your baseball mitt to catch them. So, we need to be upstairs in three minutes. Is there, we're going to have to come back down here. We have a half an hour more of agenda.
Yeah, actually, the other three of them is more informational.
I understand, but we have votes and calendars and admissions policies and whatnot. So, we're going to adjourn for now. We're not going to adjourn forever. We're going to adjourn for now, we'll go upstairs. We will have a dialogue with the public, or actually, a one-way dialogue, as it were, with public, and then we'll be back.
All right. We are coming back into session, and we will be here as long as you want, or as short as you want. Dr. Conley was in the middle of his report, much of which I believe was informational in nature, but there might be some other things that are important to highlight in here.
I just wanted to mention the MSBA webinar that is planned for Wednesday, December nine, from ten to twelve. We have three or four town and school department people have, have expressed an interest in joining us. There's room for others, we'll do it in the fifth-floor conference room. But the important thing is it's talking about the whole MSBA process. As we're waiting for the SOI response to the high school, we have all these unanswered questions, we may find it's very productive. So, if you can make it, we'd love to have you join us. It's December ninth, ten to twelve.
Right after policy, if you're bored.
Notably, it's not just talking about the MSBA process. It's talking about the MSBA process with the director, the staff director of the MSBA.
Do you want to mention the letter in some way, shape or form?
Yeah.
Just so everybody knows.
On a webinar, but here in this room. He'll be, he'll be down in his office. One additional comment, one additional comment about MSBA. Mel Kleckner and I penned a letter, a joint letter to MSBA, asking for a meeting with them to talk about the high school issue versus the ninth school issue, try and get some clarification, what our chances are of getting both schools funded, or if we choose to go with a high school being through the MSBA process, what options we have for the ninth school. And we hope to have that meeting as quickly as possible, ideally before the SOI ruling comes out on the high school. We find, not yet, it's been, it's been there for maybe ten, that letter, maybe they've had it for about a week now.
About a week.
Yeah. And the other two or three things on the superintendent's report were just informational, except Karen and Jennifer are here. They attended these wonderful worthwhile professional development workshops. I don't know if you have the energy to hear a few comments on it, but they were very worthwhile.
We have chocolate cookies if you tell us about your workshop. I know.
And all joking aside, it is an important topic, and if you want to tell us next time, that would be fine also. Okay. Or now. Okay. No, it's important. We do want to hear this.
Yeah.
Okay. So, I'll give it to you. We, Joanna Burge from the Department of Public Health and Development, who is part of, really on work around making performance in schools and performance in classrooms and in the environment. And it actually kind of aligns me to, the work that Jennifer and I have, the project of doing, is from the end of the term, and with my, that principle, with Eric Jensen, who has written a number of books, people on the welfare of poverty, the books specifically that we look at, and we do that one day and two days, with a broad spectrum of people coming from the partnership across all departments, around teaching and poverty in mind, which again, looks at the impact of poverty in terms of the rest of the way, and how that impacts learning, as well as all the things that school teachers, arts organizations can do to mitigate that impact in terms of product instruction, home design instruction, the labor instruction, but also kind of craft organization. And so, as part of people's work, we have, um...
DS's effort around, they have a project called the Low Income Education Access Project, which really is aimed at addressing some of the disproportionality in special education that DS is seeing across school systems. I think as we've spoken here before, we are, we are and have been addressing the disproportionality in Brookline, which is at higher rates than many districts across the Commonwealth. So, very clearly an important topic, and we're excited that we had the opportunity with the department and with staff to really dig deeply into the work.
The only piece I would add is a little bit of the Brookline flair that we're bringing to this work when we're asking Kenny Kozelar, K-12 coordinator of performing arts, to really help us think about, as we learn Eric Jensen's work in terms of engaging students with poverty in mind, how we can use the performing arts as a strategy to actually do that work. So, we're excited about it.
Anything else that's your report? Any other questions for the superintendent? All right. Seeing none, we will move on to school committee actions. We have two. One is the calendar. Why don't, Dr. Conley, why don't you just do that one since you're up already, and then we'll move to the policy. There should be a piece in your packet that was at the table with the calendar, and it was also emailed out in advance.
Item number one in the superintendent's report kind of summarized the two options, but basically, you have two options before you. Both options, here, I'm giving you my take on both options. Both options eliminate the six hours of the professional development tracking, which has, for the one-hundred-and-eighty-third day, we've shifted from working the one-hundred-and-eighty-third day to having the teachers submit on a yearly basis how they used, how they accumulated up to six hours of professional development. Well, with eight-hundred-and-forty-eight teachers in the system, tracking the submitted of those forms, making sure they aligned to the teacher's teaching assignment, was just an overwhelming task, and done a good use of their time or the administrative time. And so, next year, we're proposing to go with the one-hundred-and-eighty-third day to be a professional development, full day of school, and both of these options provide that. Both options have the last day of school on the same day, Tuesday, June twentieth. Both options all include the one-hundred-and-eighty-third day, as I just mentioned, as a professional development day. Option two has the grade K-nine students returning on Friday, September second, whereas option one have the kids coming back on Thursday and Friday of that week, not just Friday. So, it's kind of, one of the concerns I have is bringing the kids back for just one day on a Friday. This year, for example, we had, we returned on a Thursday this year, so we had two days this year. Option two also has Tuesday, November eighth, as our professional development day, using the National Election Day, Tuesday, November eighth, as the day we have the professional development activity. Option one has it on October eleventh, which is between the two holidays. October tenth is a non-school day, and October twelfth is a religious day. And so, it would, the kids would stay out for the five-day weekend, the staff would come back on a Tuesday and have a professional development day on that Tuesday. I think both calendars have merit. For example, not having the kids in school on the National Election Day, November eighth, I think is something we should consider. We work so hard every day of the year to make sure our schools, our doors are locked and the schools are secure, and on the National Election Day, I think, I think six of our ten schools are used as an election site. The doors are open, we have, you know, many, many adults, strangers walking through the schools, and so, we really can't offer it as a secure environment on Election Day. So, having that, again, as a, as a teacher day but not a student day, has merit to it. I think option one was developed by the superintendent's office. It was shared with the teacher association and the leadership team. It certainly has our support, and just this past week, after the teacher association considered option one, they came back with this option two as a, as a second consideration. So, you have before you two considerations. Contractual language allows this to be considered, and if by February, we do not have a consensus opinion, then the school committee can choose which option they believe is the best one. I've just had a chance to see this option two briefly yesterday and kind of get it in your packet for tonight. We can certainly go back to the discussion table with the BEU and talk about the two options. We can come back on the December seventeenth meeting and maybe have a consensus option for you, but certainly, this is two options for you as a school committee to consider. I think both options are viable. I do have insurance about option two, but they both, they both have merit.
So, typically, this, in a first reading, we would sort of have a first discussion about it and then take it away and at least attempt to get some clarity on what we might be able to do, and then vote on a second reading. So, if, if we feel like that's a possibility, we should pursue that, and if we feel like it might need more conversation, we should, we should do that and not bring it back for a second reading until we're clear on, so I guess that tonight would be about, if people have thought to reactions that they want to give to Dr. Conley for further discussion, then we can do that. But we wouldn't bring it back for a second reading until we make progress on that.
But I wanted, I kind of jumped over by mistake. The option two has that Tuesday, November, October eleventh as a non-school day for everyone, so the kids, instead of coming, kids would not be in that day anyway, but they, they are calling for the staff also not to be in, be a totally non-school day on Tuesday, October eleventh. And what they have done, by starting school on, on August thirty-first, you make up for that day. So, they're willing to come back a day before September first, which is only, only they can approve that, a day before September first, to keep the last day of school on the same day, June twentieth. So, they're willing to come back a day before September 1st, which is only they can approve that, a day before September 1st, to keep the last day of school on the same day, June 20th.
Right. And I think, so, I have a lot of reactions to this, but why don't we go around, Dr. Jackson?
I guess I just have a clarifying question, and it's because I'm half asleep. But for either calendar option, we still accomplish the goal of having the full day professional development. Yes? Okay. Okay. So, I want to just make sure that doesn't shift. And then Rebecca was whispering to me, and I had the same question. October 11th anticipated low student attendance. Is that because it's prior to Yom Kippur? Is that, why is that anticipated at low?
It's in between two days of non-school, right? So, the sense is that many families would be a five-day weekend.
If we took the 12th. What's our Jewish population in Brookline, and how big is it that actually?
Also, teachers, teachers and students.
No, I understand. I'm just trying to follow the...
We close school on the 12th.
Right. Yeah.
So, we're closed on Monday and closed on Wednesday.
You don't have to close school on Tuesday.
That's my...
Your question is...
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand what the impact really would be. No, no, I get it. But here, they're suggesting we do close it, right, in their options?
Both options.
In both options. Okay. And then, and was there any concern about, I mean, if we're going to take Election Day, we should take Election Day. Why?
Well, we actually considered the October 11th on November 8th as the two viable days for the professional development.
I see. Okay.
They both have good reasons to choose either one.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else over here? We'll just keep going.
I don't have any immediate questions or comments. I need to look at this. There are some issues that raise some questions that we may be dealing with in collective bargaining. And so, I would want to have a conversation with you, Dr. Connolly, about that.
I would just say that if you're thinking about low attendance, the starting school on the Friday before Labor Day is tough. Versus having the teachers back Thursday and Friday, get the three-day weekend, start school on the Tuesday, makes a lot more sense.
I also just want to add another dynamic to think about, which is, you know, while on the one hand, some of these days may be low-attendance days, on the other hand, adding days off of school where the rest of the world isn't taking days off is extremely difficult for working families, and I feel like we need to balance those two things.
So, just on both of those, so one of them is a question around, you know, does the 11th have to be off? And I think, you know, Dr. Connolly, I heard you say that one of the proposals originally was maybe the 11th should be the full-day professional development day if, so I don't know. I don't know what happened to that idea.
We feel strongly would like to bring back the 183rd day as a P D, full P D day. Also, as I mentioned in my superintendent's...
As October 11th?
October 11th or November 8th.
I understand, but neither of the, I'm just, I'm just, right. So, one of them is that it doesn't look like either one of these options has that one as the choice.
Yes, the option two does. They use, meant to anyways.
Am I missing something here?
Not October 11th. November 8th.
Right.
The Election Day is their professional development day.
Okay. So, let me take a step back. I think one question would be, is October 11th as the 183rd day viable?
We believe it is.
Okay. So, then that might be something to look at. I think the second thing that is coming out is just the impact, and we talked about this before, was the impact on working families of having three days off or even two days off when many other people aren't off, and what does that look like? And could we do something creative with the rec department or something to provide options? So, we did talk about that. But anyway, so I think that's on the radar screen.
So, option one doesn't have a label, well, it should. An option one, October 11th is the professional development day.
Oh, it is. Okay.
It is.
It's a sincere P on it. I think that's why I was confused. Okay, okay. Okay, great. Want to keep going, Barbara? Ms. Cottrell?
I have, I really have questions about having kids come back one day before Labor Day. And I think the attendance is one issue. But it's also, excuse me, it's also from a teaching point of view. You have the kids one day, and there's, it's very nice when they get to come back the next day. They're a little bit used to things. But here, you're having them come one day. You're putting a weekend in between, and it's almost like you're going to start again because, in fact, you are going to have significant absence, probably, because people will say, oh, well, you know, I might as well take the child out. It's the first day of school. What are they going to miss? So, in a sense, you'll end up having two first days because there will be a lot of kids for whom that Monday will be the equivalent of their first day. And I also think there's something very good about having at least two days when you start school together, because the first day is kind of an introductory day. And the next day, they come in, they're familiar with it, you can get down to work. And then, when the weekend occurs, and they come back on Monday morning, it's not so much a sense of newness. They're settled in a little bit. I, as a teacher, I wouldn't like this.
I think what I hear, there's a lot of variations on a theme that could happen here. You know, depending, I think what Barbara sings is correct, and I like the fact that the teachers were suggesting to start on the 31st and have those two days as their first two days. I do, and I'm wondering how Sacrosanct's ending on June 20th is. Can you end on June 21st, for instance? And then solve the problem that way. You know, and then take out the second, start on the 6th for regular school. And then, the issue of the P D day, I think, could go either way. I think, you know, I don't know, maybe we survey parents and see what they prefer.
Dr. Jackson?
Just a couple other thoughts. One, I'm curious why October, not why, whether there's another date other than October 11th that could still meet the idea you have here of getting the 183rd day? And is there another option in the mix that we could consider? Because I do agree with Barbara. I don't know, maybe it's just because it feels more developmentally appropriate when I think of kindergartners, for example, like to have the first two days. I think actually is incredibly helpful. So, keeping that, and could we jigger with the October 11th? The other thing I will say is that I am not a fan of how late our district gets out in June. And one of the reasons is because we are way off schedule with camps and summer opportunities for kids. And so, the only hesitation I have, Helen, with your suggestion of going deeper into that week, is that most camps are not going to accommodate you, with the exception of Viking and maybe Brookline Rec. And so, I think parents, what will happen, and it happens, it's happened before, kids will, the last day of school will be the 16th. And so, it's...
Do they start that early?
They do. And whether they start that early or not, it's also the middle of the week. And so, what happens is it's difficult to purchase a half-week of camp. And so, what you'll have are parents who just pull their kids out. And so, I hesitate around pushing us too far into what basically will be July.
Well, just to add to that, I mean, actually, they really, really start on the 26th, but we are always into that week because of snow days. So, I think, yeah.
It's not that it ends on the camp beginning on the 20th.
We will be in July.
I don't know how many snow days we're going to have, but you will definitely be into camp season. So, anyway. Any other thoughts on this? I mean, I think, is there any support for...
I'm sorry, one other thought. I understand the security issues about Election Day, but I also think that it's really important for kids to see Election Day in process and to see people voting and to see, you know, that people, you know. It's just an important civic experience.
I think we see it as merit in both days.
Yeah.
The answer, their comment on Beth's comment about the disruption to parents, you know, having a day off, parents looking for childcare. For that reason, we've settled on October 11th, thinking with the long weekend, that might be the least disruptive to parents looking for childcare, where there's no school on Monday, there's no school on Wednesday. They may have already made arrangements for childcare, rather than have the kids come in in the middle of the week for just one day, compared to another day. But we still feel we can make that professional development experience much more productive, much more exciting if we have the whole day.
Is there anybody who is supportive of the idea of a five-day September 2nd start? As the first day of school? Okay, Ms. Cottrell.
But I am, I don't want it to start on the 7th. You know, if the first and second are the first two teacher days, well, either way it would, I guess. Yeah, that's up to them then.
Okay, okay. So, but just so you are hearing from the board, I don't think there's any support for starting on Friday the 2nd. So...
It's a singleton start day.
Right, as a singleton date. Okay.
So, my question is actually about, since I don't have the contract in front of me. We negotiated a change, I'm just wondering about the statement that contractually, this is allowed as long as it's not scheduled on days prior to September 1st. When we negotiated a change to that, and what I'm trying to remember is when that change was to be implemented. Is it not implementable here because that was a part of our...
Can you attach it? You should have the contract page.
But the one-year agreement spoke directly to the ability to start earlier.
I thought the change was that we could bring the teachers back before Labor Day but not the kids. Isn't that what was negotiated?
No, because bringing the...
It might have...
It might have been, that's why I said, I just want to know what the contract language says.
Okay.
Because if it's possible to bring the teachers back and start the students on Thursday and Friday, then that's something we ought to be considering.
Before Labor Day. So, why don't we just leave that in your hands, which is to say...
Do you want to read the contract?
Oh, do you have it?
Well, you have the one-year...
This is the one-year?
...deal that we did. Is this from a one-year deal?
Let's look at that, Drs., I'm just saying that if, in fact, we have a different...
I got it, we got it, we got it. Right. So, here's what I'll say. Why don't we leave in your hands, somewhere between you and Elaine, the idea of looking at the Thursday, Friday before Labor Day, if, you know, if that works, but not as a singleton day? Is there any other big guidance that we want to give? Because otherwise, I'm going to, we're going to stop this now and turn it back over to staff and have them come back. What?
One quick suggestion, I'm not sure if it's possible to have the professional development day on Veterans Day. It's a national holiday, but not everywhere. I mean, in many parts of the country, people go to school on Veterans Day.
I would also, the only last comment I would have is that if, in fact, November 8th is being seriously contemplated, and we are expecting full teacher attendance because this is a very important professional development day, it's mandatory, then I just don't want to hear from teachers, because this was a B E U idea. I don't want to hear from teachers that because of this, we are infringing on their ability as citizens to take a personal day and engage civically in a presidential campaign. So, I, right, well, but my point is that if that's what they want, then that has to be a B E U decision and a communication. No, the point, you're right. Well, they can take an A day as is. But the point is, if we are going to say that we want a mandatory, very important professional development day, they can still take an A day. But I think, I'm just going to stop there, which is that if we see, because the union put it on that day, and then we see a tremendous number of A days on a very important professional development activity, that's, especially if it's raised in equity and other things, I think there will be consequences to that also. That's all. So, can we just give this back to you?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I just ask one more question about going, so, so the, having a single professional development day was our model for a very long time? And the move away from that was something that we voted to allow to happen to accommodate a different approach to professional development? And I just want to be, I just want to be certain. I mean, I assume that since the staff brought this to us, that that's been thought through. But I wondered what has changed, other than the difficulty of scheduling that?
So, it used to be one day, and we moved to six hours, and now we're going back to one day. What's, what is this?
Yes. So, it used to be one day, then negotiations were such that it went to six hours and the district can determine it not as a giving six hours over, but actually calling it a single day. That was the negotiation. It was both of those in that same piece.
That was something we sought because we wanted that flexibility, I thought.
We sought to be able to claim that six-hour, yes.
We're saying at the time that the single day was no longer serving our...
We were not saying that. We were not saying that the same...
I misunderstood. I thought, I thought that it was our position that we could, that the flexibility would also give us the ability to have different groupings, that it would, that it would work better for professional development. But if you're saying that, that having tried that out, thinking that it would work, that it's, we now believe that that single day is, in fact, better for professional development? And that's why we're going back in that direction?
We are going to the, to claiming those six hours because we want to make it a mandatory day that every educator is present for a day of learning on issues of race and equity.
So, this shift back to the full day was the administrator's proposal to the association. I think reading the contract, they realized that it's our call on how we use that day. So, they didn't come back and challenge that. Instead, they recommended other, different days to be used for it.
Last comment, the birthday girl.
What I remember about that, I remember something similar to you. But I think the issue was there were many choices that people could make. And the setting up of the professional development and the choosing of it was a problem. This now will focus on everybody, I assume, doing basically the same thing. That is to say, it's all thematically the same thing in by grade level or however you choose to do it. But when we used to have it, it used to be a potpourri of all kinds of different things. And that became what was problematic, I thought. It doesn't matter. It's not worth, we don't need to, but that was my recollection.
All right. As long as it's aligned with district priorities, and this is the district priority this year, then we are good. True? Excellent. Nine-zero. All right. So, there are two more agenda items, and I will leave it at the discretion of each of the committee chairs as to whether we're going to do them tonight, given the lateness of the hour and the urgency of having them completed. So, Dr. Jackson?
I'm not going to comment on the urgency because I don't think I have a strong opinion about that anymore. So, maybe, maybe what would be helpful for the policy subcommittee to keep moving would be just to explain where we are with this policy and see at least where people are. Because I'm, to be candid, I've been struggling with how best to move this particular policy to the second reading for a vote, given that I don't know that we'll ever get to a place of perfection. So, this is a policy that we have been working on to address really three issues. One, as with every policy, we need to clean them up periodically. We need to check for language. We need to make sure we are in compliance with any existing laws. The other was that, as brought to us by Dr. Schmuckler, staff were needing support and guidance to ensure consistency and fairness in the application of the policy. And also, just some greater clarity, because as Judy Myers mentioned, and in many ways, her comments I completely agree with and are all accurate, there isn't case law actually to support our choices around this policy. There is a definition of residence. We have not changed that in this policy. We did, per our last piece of feedback, expand what we called at the time a compassionate exception clause to make sure that the superintendent and/or his/her designee could be flexible in waiving things like tuition and/or residency. And then, we received a lot of strong reaction to the idea that we were setting a bright line for what would be considered temporary versus permanent. And to Judy Myers' point earlier tonight, and Ruth Kaplan, I believe, sent all of you an email with a lot of a similar perspective. We're concerned that, one, it would be challengeable legally because there's nothing currently that says that's the way you should do it, either at the state or federal level. There are lots of... at the state or federal level. There are lots of rules around visas, but this is not a visa issue. Um, and this is not an issue of fraud. We're not even trying to touch that issue because we can't with a policy like this. Um, but the notion of putting forth something that suggested that there is a numeric date on which you say somebody can or cannot be considered a resident raised some concerns, both about how people would perceive Brookline in terms of being a welcoming community and also whether or not we'd be open to legal challenge. We have met pretty extensively with council and in our last meeting, Mary Ellen, Karen, myself, Jocelyn, Patty, met again. Um, and at the advice of council, we included the language of presumption in an attempt to say something about the fact that the churn we get in our schools is about people who are here under three months. And the data supports that. And that if there were a way to signal to people that that raises our curiosity about whether or not you can adequately show residence, we thought it was worth trying to create some language that would be legally justifiable and also, um, send that signal. So, um, the subcommittee has read this many times. And I think at our last meeting, we agreed it was ready to come forth for a second reading. In addition to Judy Myers' feedback, Ruth Kaplan's feedback, I don't believe, just checking with Robin, we've received anything else on our website because we reposted again just to ensure that if there was another set of feedback, we got it. The only other piece of feedback I've received from somebody by way of a fellow committee member was that they looked at the original, they looked at this and said they were basically the same, and they didn't understand what we were changing. That's the only other feedback I ever received. So, um, I guess, you know, I would be thrilled to move it to second reading, but I also do appreciate that, um, this policy, you know, it is what it is. I think it could be less confusing, more confusing. I'm not sure we're going to get to a perfect policy. I think Dr. Schmuckler is satisfied with what we've generated, um, but I'm still very open, um, if people have strong opinions about it, um, to revisiting it and continuing down that path. So, I'm, um, either one.
Right. My, I, I think this is better than it was originally. However, part of what stops me is this very cert-, first sentence, which is the definition of residency. Because in fact, if you're thinking that, I mean, if you're thinking of a three-month cutoff, uh, three months' time, forget, forget the difficulties with that, then it's difficult to say that a resident is a place where, that is the center of his or her domestic, social, and civic life, because that could be in another place. But that's not where the child is living now. So it might not be the center of his or her life. It might be the temporary center of his or her life. So that, and I'm not saying to change it, to say that, but that piece is what I, what catches me. I, the, I like the term, the actual place where the child is living, which you do use later on. Um, and I, I don't know about the three months or less because, again, if you establish some kind of, if you, as Judy said tonight, if you go to the trouble of getting a gas bill or whatever in, in your name, you have all the paperwork.
We have to admit you. So just to be, to be supremely clear-
Right.
To be as clear as I possibly, and, and I don't know how to be clearer, because it, no matter what we do, nobody seems to, I can't quite get this right. This policy, as it reads, does not prohibit anybody from submitting paperwork to support residency. So the presumptive statement is a statement that is intended to signal that just renting an apartment down the street and being here for two seconds doesn't make you a resident in Brookline. You still have to show residency. So we are, what we are trying to do in putting that statement in is to reiterate maybe, and maybe that is too confusing. We've certainly gotten the feedback to your comment, Barbara, that those two things seem sort of weirdly connected in that paragraph, but that, that nowhere in here does it say, um, you can't still prove residency. In fact, you can, and, and people do, as I understand it from Karen. Um, so it doesn't prevent that. It is meant to give people pause to the extent that they might consider that without appreciating that they do in fact have to establish residency. That said, you know, we didn't change the first part of this. Um, this is the original policy. The definition of residence is the original policy. We've not touched that. That actually does come from existing, um, language from MASC and elsewhere. So we didn't, we didn't make that up. Now, we may never get it quite right, but that, but that has been the way that most of the policies we've reviewed have defined what residency is. Um, and I think, to your point, maybe there are ways to lessen some of the confusion, but, but that is the original language.
Has anyone at MASC looked at this policy?
Yeah, that's original. MASC has reviewed the policy and we have compared their policies. We've compared to Milton, Lexington, Cambridge. We've done a line-by-line analysis. They all use the same definition. Um, and they all, they vary on how much data they require. Some of them actually go much further than we do around things like visas, and we're trying really hard to not conflate this with some of the immigration pieces of this puzzle. Um, but, and some of them do actually use language like temporary. But, um, everybody uses that, and it's because it's coming out of MASC, having people lift it out of their policy.
I mean, I like to second this. I looked at this one. I looked at the previous one. I don't see much of a difference. The amount of brain damage has been, we're, we're sold beyond the point of, you know, additional, diminishing return. Let's, to me, this is, it's, it's telling that the one version to another hasn't materially changed. How many people have spent time on this? What does that tell you?
I'm not sure, Ben, but I will tell you this. I'm, I'm really not sure anymore, but, um, I used to think I knew. But, um, Karen, Dr. Schmuckler and her team are keeping amazing statistics on our churn and on our residency and what the, and, and I, and we will continue to do that. And so I do think if we were to move this forward and pass it and implement it, um, we would be in a really good position to be able to say, did this have any consequence at all? Has there been any real change? Um, we aren't looking for exceptional change. We are looking for staff to feel a little more comfortable that they have something that works for their ability to then engage their procedures. Dr. Schmuckler, Dr. Schmuckler, sorry, seems to feel that this does that to some extent. Um, and so I think, I do think it's worth a try, at least in that regard, and if we could track the data and revisit it, maybe in six months. Uh, you know, we don't have to wait a whole year. We'd be happy to do that.
My, my sense, Mr. Chang, is that the reason this has taken so much brain power is that it is a place not, where it isn't just rearranging words and deck chairs, it's, it's running up against values questions. And when that happens, every change, every period and comma matters. And so whether or not it's a good use of time, I think that's probably why it got so many people. I mean, we had former school committee members who were lobbying us nonstop, emails, voicemails, phone calls, committee meeting after committee meeting after committee meeting. I mean, this one has touched a nerve. And so I think the question is, if it, if it does what our staff wants it to do, and we feel basically comfortable with it, it's worth a try. If it doesn't work, we can change it.
Exactly. So my point here is this is not engraved in stone. If it doesn't work, we'll come back and revisit it based on things that's not, uh, it's not functioning for us.
I'll second it.
All right. We have a motion.
But can I just say something, Ben?
It's a discussion.
Can I say one more?
Further discussion.
So that first line, there's a reason for that. And that has to do with, there can be somebody who resides in Brookline part of the week and resides, has a residence and where they do most of the things in another place. And that's, that's part of the problem too there. I mean, that's one of the things that our attendance officer tries to check to make sure the kids are sleeping here in Brookline.
VITV has turned off my microphone.
I think it's the, it's the battery.
I want to clarify one thing that came up, um, in conversation, which was that, um, given the sensitivity around refugees, particularly at this time, that, um, that somebody asked me whether or not this would be seen as a sign that, that we would not, you know, be welcoming. And, and I just want to point out that the compassionate exclusion that we put in deliberately covers anybody here, uh, under, under that status. Um, the second thing, I just want to, I just want to point out that I believe that Judy Myers was making a point about the law and the differences in the legal statutes as they are reflected or not reflected in this policy language. She has pointed out, she has pointed out something that does exist as a bit of a contradiction, given what I understand about the statute. I don't believe it is an obstacle to our implementing this policy, but I do believe it's something we should take a harder look at as we are doing our due diligence to make sure that the policy is written in a way that is consistent with, um, the statutes that govern, that govern our requirement to serve anyone who actually resides in Brookline.
Is there any further substantive discussion?
I guess I, I am just confused about that because, uh, as I understood what Dr. Jackson just said, that, that legal counsel actually said that we were okay with this as written. And so I just would like some clarification. It's like, are we okay or are we not okay?
So we are okay in as much as we are saying that to be educated in the town of Brookline, you have to reside in the town of Brookline, and we give a definition of residence. In that regard, we are fine. What the law doesn't do for us is when we start to use words like temporary or where we start to put in something like, which is why we chose the language presumed, is that, is that the law doesn't help us with that. The law, we're, we're taking our own sort of course and trying to say, we're not saying you can't be here for three months. And the law doesn't say you can't prove residency in three months, which is why legal counsel gave us that language. Are we open to legal challenge? Yes, and we were before. I don't think we are anymore, based on what, at least I understand from counsel, is the law. But now, it's turned to our lawyer.
Not the counsel who, who have studied this in depth, but if I remember correctly, I mean, the problem with the statute is it lacks a lot of specificity in terms of what the intent of the legislature was. If you, if you, if you take it to its extreme conclusion, if someone who lives here for five hours under the statute, is that the intent of the statute for them to be a resident? So there's, I mean, there's, I don't think that's, anyone would agree that that's what it means. So if you want to give it that literal interpretation, then maybe you agree with what Ms. Myers says. But I think, I don't, I don't think anybody logically thinks that's what it means. And there's a certain amount of leeway that you have in terms of establishing.
So, again, only, only to be fair to, to Judy and the research that she did, the statute does not establish who is or is not a resident. The statute compels us to provide a free education to children who actually reside here. So the only, the only thing anyone has to do to have access to a public school is to prove residency. We have a policy that sets out how you have to prove residency in Brookline. It does not require you to sign an affidavit that you plan to be here for more than three months, which is why we were careful, as Dr. Jackson has said repeatedly, to say, it is presumed that if a student is residing here for three months or, and it should be changed to fewer, frankly, not that less, the student does not meet resident eligibility requirements. If someone comes in and says, we intend to be here for fewer than three months, that is a declaration that we can now point to and say, this policy makes the following assumption. If they, however, simply come in and prove residency based on legitimate documents, they are admitted to the public schools of Brookline.
Okay. So I am going to call the previous question because you all want to talk, but you're going to blame me at how late we are, um, and I serve at your pleasure. So, um, is, we're going to vote on this. Um, all those in favor? All right. All those opposed? And we have one abstention. All right. Thank you very much. Thank you, Dr. Jackson, for shepherding us through this. Thank you, Ms. Stone. Thank you, Dr. Schmuckler. Ms. Dunn, um, extend our thanks to town council. Um, and it might be worth somebody sending a note to Judy and Ruth and just letting them know. Okay. Um, Ms. Ram, is there anything, given that no one is here except all of the people who have already talked about your report, is there anything you'd like to say?
So I'm going to say that the only benefit, I mean, given that seven out of nine of us were at the meeting where we discussed this and the report has not changed since we discussed it, the only benefit of discussing this is for the broader public. And so I don't know that-
That they're not here.
Right.
Okay. All right. Excellent. Well, we are going to defer this to, um, the December seventeenth agenda, Ms. Coin, if that's okay. Um, I'm going to assume there's no new business and we are going to adjourn just shy of eleven PM. Mr. Chang, um, thank you all for your patience. Thank you to our tireless staff for, for staying here.